Welcome to Cupertino City Special Meeting. Today is March 7, 2023. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Fruein?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Mayor Wei?
Thank you. Up here. Okay, we're moving to number one. Considering our resolution amending the established city council meeting calendar through January 2, 2024. May we have a staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Mayor Wei. Go ahead, Kirsten.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Let me just quickly pivot to my notes here. Okay, so on January 17, Council established the city council meeting calendar through January 2, 2024. The proposed resolution amends the meeting calendar to address potential conflicts that are occurring in April, June, July, and September. The amended calendar follows the regular first and third Tuesday meeting schedule, except for meetings that have been moved due to a holiday closure or a scheduling conflict. First, the Cupertino-Sinchu Sister City Association has scheduled its annual student delegate trip to Sinchu City, Taiwan on April 16 through the 22. A visit to Taipei Friendship City in Taiwan is also scheduled during this time. The delegation visits will be led by Mayor Wei and accompanied by City Manager Wu. These dates conflict with the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, April 18. Council may wish to consider an alternate meeting date when the mayor and city manager are available to discuss, to consider matters of city business. If the regular meeting on April 18 is canceled, a special meeting may be called in its place. Community Hall Council, the Community Hall Council Chamber is available for use on Thursday, April 13. Other dates are not available during that week. So, Community Hall, as mentioned, is reserved for events on Tuesday and Wednesday of that week. Second, the city council agenda publication process will be impacted by the federal holidays occurring in June, July, and September of this calendar year. There is a supplemental process where staff provides responses to council member questions on agenda items. Staff responses are normally provided to the council and public 24 hours prior to the council meeting, but this would be delayed until the day of the meeting. So this applies to those council meeting dates occurring immediately after a holiday closure on June 20, July 5, and September 5. For those dates, staff will publish the agenda one day earlier to provide time for council members to review the agenda packet and to submit their questions. Council may also wish to consider scheduling those meetings one day later to allow additional time for council and adequate time for staff to prepare responses to the questions. Let me just pull up the schedule, so you can actually see what we're, what I'm referring to. Share my screen. Okay, so if you see the, the April, Tuesday, April 10, meeting is being recommended to be changed to Thursday, the 13th, due to the Sister City delegation visit. Additionally, the Tuesday, June 20, meeting would be moved one day later due to the Juneteenth holiday to Wednesday, the 21st. Also, the July 5 meeting, which has already been moved due to the July 4 holiday, that would be moved to Thursday, the 6th. And then finally, the September 5 meeting would be moved to Wednesday, September 6th. So the recommendation is to adopt the draft resolution to approve those amendments. And if approved, the, if council does wish to authorize making these changes, staff would provide the appropriate notifications to the public in advance. And Mayor, that is my update.
Thank you, Kirstine. Do council have any questions? If not, I'll open to the public comment, please. Do you have any cards, Kirstine?
So I do have a card from Jennifer Griffin. However, it doesn't have an item number. It just says special meeting. Do you want to speak on this item or the item two? Yes, welcome, Jennifer. If you'd like to come to the podium. And then if we have people on Zoom wishing to comment on this item, please have your hand raised in the next nine minutes.
Yeah, you know, I speak English, a little bit of Swedish, and I also speak Spanish. And I, you know, it's very, very difficult coming in here after 23 years and five years in Board of Supervisors to all of a sudden feel stupid because I don't know how I'm supposed to follow the folders. In this point, remember that oftentimes you all cancel meetings in the summer. I think 4th of July is on a Tuesday. I'm a bit confused about why the city council meeting's on a Thursday. I, I'm a little bit concerned about moving around city council meetings this far in advance. There is a very, very loaded agenda going on with the city, et cetera, in the next couple of months. We have a lot of the housing bills that the, that the governor may be able to sign in September. You need to make sure that the public has access to their city. This is, you guys are our lifeline in terms of how we understand how political situations are playing out in our state. I will tell you right now, I am extremely concerned as someone from the public. I want to know that my city council is here and available and listening. This determines on who I vote for president, who I vote for governor, who I vote to replace Pelosi and Feinstein, and I need to have you all here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Mayor, there are no further hands raised on Zoom or blue speaker cards in Community Hall.
All right, thank you. I'll close the public comments, and I'll bring it back to council for deliberation discussions. Councilmember Chow?
So, my understanding is every, we are moving the council meeting from Tuesday to Wednesday for every week when Monday is a holiday, right?
That's correct. Every, every time that there is a city hall closure and it falls on a Monday, I think in one instance, it actually falls on a Tuesday. That's correct.
So that staff has time before the council meeting to answer questions. So I would like, that's understandable. But I think for a member of the public to be moving, shifting between Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it's very confusing, especially for seniors. Because I recently just helped a senior who is confused about dance classes if it's changes from week to week. So I would like to propose for next year, can we, maybe we should consider moving the city council meeting to Wednesday. Because personally, Tuesday also is a pretty bad day for me at work. And so if that way, then we don't have to be moving city council meeting around because of holidays. Maybe that makes more sense. So could the staff maybe study that option and bring it back to the council? It's still early, now we can plan for next year.
Yes, staff would like, Mayor, may I respond? So staff would like to prepare for these potential conflicts in the following calendar year.
Through the mayor, let me take that. Thank you, Kirsten. Great suggestion, Councilmember Chow. We will look into the possibility of having the entire council calendar shift to a Wednesday. As you may know, that there are other commissions and committees that also use this facility and also staff to support other dates. Usually, these calendars are pre-populated more than a year ahead. So looking at the staff report, we are asking two of the future dates within this year to move one extra day. With the majority of the council meeting to stay still on a Tuesday calendar, we would have to do a lot of shifting if council directs staff to move the Tuesday meeting to a Wednesday. I do believe there are other commission that meets regularly on Wednesday right now.
Yes, and I might add that the municipal code specifies that meetings, council meeting, regular council meetings occur on the first and third, so it would, of the mind, so it would require municipal code amendment. But the calendar does, the municipal code does also provide for holidays. If there is a holiday, then the regular meeting automatically moves to the following day.
But I think this is too much change with every Monday, that's holiday, we will have to shift. I think then all the other commissions also will have to shift around depending on when it's a holiday. That seems to be adding more confusion. So maybe we should just consider the option of moving council meeting to Wednesday once for all, if that's, so that we don't have two different schedule.
Are you proposing a, a gen item?
For agenda item that to bring back to the council for a potential permanently moving city council meeting to Wednesday.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, you have your light up.
Pardon, that was for a different item.
Sorry, Councilmember Moore.
I will second that for the purposes of discussion.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
So my question was, how many of these holidays fall on a Tuesday? I know July 4 does.
So for so far, we've, so far, we've had a Martin Luther King's Day in January and then the President's Day in February. Looking in the calendar, there is a Juneteenth holiday coming in June, and again, Labor Day in September. So there will be four in addition to how 4th of July falls on a calendar. If the holiday falls on a Tuesday, so we're also asking, and typically it will fall on a Wednesday, so we're also asking council to move the Tuesday meeting to a Thursday to accommodate a working day ahead of the council meeting. So it's four plus one.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, your mic, Councilmember.
I can hear you.
Sorry, I thought you mentioned the only either Labor or Memorial, but not both.
Memorial Day is not a council meeting week.
Oh, because it happens to not be a council meeting week. Okay.
So we have the current agenda item. Do we have a motion to approve the current proposals, Councilmember Moore?
So there was something in this procedures manual which is kind of confused me. It's 7.6 on supplemental materials, and the question I have is that now we have regular scheduled meetings, regular meetings and special meetings. This item doesn't seem to distinguish those two, and our special meetings can be on any day. So does this make sense? Because it's now, it's, it has a particular day of the week mentioned. So supplemental reports and materials received by the city clerk after the agenda is published before 12:00 PM on the Monday, prior to the city council meeting, shall be published and delivered to council members, et cetera. So I'm just wondering if that still is going to work for you, or does this need to have some modification if you're not working on Monday, those types of things?
Don't you, Kirsten?
So those procedures are intended for regular meetings. We could clarify the manual to make them that clearer. There was an intent to leave special meeting procedures a little bit more flexible because they take so many different forms, and, and, and so I wouldn't recommend being very prescriptive about how you prepare for a special meeting.
Okay, through, through the mayor, but our special meetings are, are these going to be considered, ask it a different way. Are the meetings that are going to be on, for instance, Thursday, April 13, are those going to be considered regular meetings? Because they're not.
They would be special meetings as a matter of law. I think what the city manager is proposing is treating the preparation process for those meetings as if they were regular meetings with the same timelines in advance.
Okay, and does this, does that, is that specified in this, in this item if we go to approve it?
It is, it's not in the item, I believe. It's, it's the city manager's intent.
Okay, so is there a way that we can wordsmith this to have that included in the motion? So that the intention is like, that we're spelling it out?
Certainly, we could, we could say that the staff will proceed based on the same timelines that are set forth in the procedures manual. And we could be, I think that's probably specific enough to get the, the direction across to the city manager.
Okay, then I would move the recommended action with the language provided by the city attorney, if that's okay?
And through the mayor, just want to point out, so Councilmember Moore's point is exactly, so I just kind of want to provide a little context for the ask, is that during the recent two holidays that happened to fall right before city council meeting day, staff team ended up spending their weekends and the holiday preparing for the council items, which is against the labor law and also union law, which would potentially expose city into a greater liability. So if councils can entertain moving certain council days to allow a city working day ahead of the council meeting day, the same procedure will follow. It is 100% my intent, and we're more than happy to put that into the motion. Additionally, Councilmember Chow, I was made aware that on Wednesdays, not only the library commission meets on Wednesday night, so it's by compet and tick and team commission. So we will have to do a number of shuffling of the calendar to continue move all of the council meetings to a Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, so I second the motion. And so does that motion include the amendment to consider the option of moving to Wednesday? I understand likely some current meetings on Tuesday would need to be swapped to Tuesday, Wednesday. Likely it's just swapping, right? Currently, some meetings on Tuesday will be moved to Wednesday. So could we study this option?
So that, that's not agendized? If you'd like to propose that as a future agenda item, you may?
I can include that in the, usually we include that as direction to bring back as part of the motion.
So that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be agendized for council action today? So, but it could be, you could request it as a future agenda item?
Yeah, I know, usually we include that as part of the motion, direction to bring back.
My, my advice is that that's not within the scope of what's been agendized today.
Okay, then another question is, I think there are certain council actions have to take, be taken on regular meetings. And now that we are shifting at least four regular meetings to be special, will that likely create challenges?
We'll take that into account in planning for the meetings. There's, there are relatively small number of actions that need to be taken in a regular meeting, so we should be able to work around that.
Okay. Thank you, we have a sec, use the light, please.
Yes, thank you. So quick question then, so for special meeting, we do not have oral communications at the start, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I kind of want to amend my original motion to ensure that we would include all of the items that a regular meeting would have in our special meetings, which are being rescheduled by this calendar.
I accept that amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion?
So we ensure that the rescheduled regular meeting will still have public comment on non-agenda items and other regular meeting requirements.
You mean oral communications? Because we always have public comments.
But special meeting usually does not require.
Right?
Yeah, I think that's the main difference, right? Is there any other difference?
We got a motion clear? Madam City Clerk?
Pardon me, Mayor?
Yeah.
Oh, do you want to run the vote now? Oh, yes, so Moore moved and Chow seconded to adopt the staff recommendation amending the established city council meeting calendar through January 2, 2024 with the amendment to revise the language that staff will proceed based on the same timeline set forth in the council procedures. And Moore added that the special meeting, all special meetings would have oral communications component added to the agenda.
Through, through the mayor. Okay, so I wanted to ensure that for these meetings per this calendar that we are changing, that the, that the intent, the language that we received earlier from the city attorney regarding the intent of the meetings, that was included in the first part. And then that these meetings, which we are changing now, will have the same, the same agendized items, the same topic headings essentially that we have in our regular meeting, that those will carry over to these special meetings, so that we're not losing out on oral communications, future agenda items, if we had committee reports, that those would all transfer over. So these are equivalent special meetings to our regular meetings, because that's really what we're trying to do, is just move a regular meeting to a better day. Okay, thank you.
The regular items of business you would like included on these special meetings?
Yeah, for these four special meetings. Okay, with the friendly amendment?
Yes, I, I think that's the same, it's just clarifying the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is it cleared, Vice Mayor Mohan? All right, so I think we're ready for a light vote, please.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, we're moving to item number two. Consider the mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2022-23, amending the underrepresented employees' compensation program and approving a new job classification. Do we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, here this evening with Thomas Leung, Budget Manager, to present to you the fiscal year 22-23 mid-year budget. So I think we're just waiting for, not quite sure how to get our presentation on the screen. We are logged in, so if someone in video could assist us and let us know what's the magic button we need to push. I'll start with a brief introduction, we can get our slides caught up.
I'm sorry, which, which item is this? I can, I can bring it up probably.
This is the mid-year budget?
Mid-year financial report? Yes, I can bring that up. I'll share my screen.
Here we go, and then if you don't mind just advancing the slides for me. Yes.
Okay, can you see my screen?
I can. The first thing we have is the agenda for the evening for this report. I don't know, Kirsten, if, I'm still seeing the first slide on the screen.
I guess give it a second, should?
There it goes, okay, we're back in business, thank you.
There's a little bit of a delay.
Okay, so we're going to be going over our budget reporting cycle as we do as part of every, every quarterly report before council. We'll also be going over the mid-year amended budget, and this is taking a look at the budget across all funds. Then we'll come in and take a closer look at the mid-year general fund update focusing on the city's largest tax-supported fund, and also where the city council has the most discretion. We'll move into recommended adjustments as part of the mid-year financial report. We'll quickly cover some transparency and engagement efforts that the budget team has, and then we'll wrap up with recommendations and next steps. So with that, I have, I just have a couple slides at the end and on the, at the beginning and the end, and then I'll hand it over to Thomas Leung. So the, the budget reporting cycle, we're here in front of council, a minimum of five times reporting on a budget in a fiscal year. The preparation for the proposed budget, which is presented to council in May, actually starts in November, with departments working on their base budget. The proposed budget is printed on May, by May 1, and then is brought to council. This year, it's scheduled for a special meeting on May 17. We take everything from the proposed budget study session, any questions or comments, and we bring those back as part of the final budget hearing and adoption, which comes before the council in June. When the final budget gets adopted in June, we then come and report as part of the first quarter, covering the months of July through September. And then we also, as part of first quarter, give you an update on how we ended the prior fiscal year. This evening, we're on the red box, which is our mid-year financial report. That covers the first six months of the fiscal year, so July 1 through December 31, 2022. And we'll be back before you again in May to go over the, the first nine months of the fiscal year as part of the third quarter financial report. And it's a loop because you see us here year after year as the new fiscal year goes through. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Thomas, who's going to take you through the bulk of the budget presentation.
Thank you, Director Alfaro.
It's a good turn, yeah.
Thank you, Director Alfaro. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Today, I'll start by providing a summary of the mid-year amended budget for all funds. This waterfall chart illustrates the evolution of the budget from proposed in May through mid-year in December. Across all funds, the budget has increased by 84.3 million since it was adopted. In the following slide, we will discuss these adjustments in greater detail. On the next slide, this table shows expenditure changes by fund. Carryovers in the second column are for unfinished projects from the previous fiscal year that were carried over to the current fiscal year. Incumbrances are for unfilled purchase orders or contracts that were carried over to this fiscal year. And also between July 1 and December 31, 2022, city council also approved additional adjustments that are shown in the fourth column of the table. In the general fund, the largest carryovers are related to fees associated with plan check and inspection services for the RISE project formerly known as VAALCO. Meanwhile, carryovers in the special revenue and capital project funds primarily resulted from uncompleted capital improvement program, or CIP, projects, because unspent funds are carried over until project completion. And then moving on to the budget adjustment column, in the first two quarters, these were mainly for 2.4 million in negotiated cost of living adjustments that were approved by city council on August 16, and also 1.8 million in first quarter adjustments that were approved by city council in November. In total, all carryovers, incumbences, and adjustments bring the fiscal year 2023 amended budget to 214.9 million. If you'd like more information on these budget adjustments, you can refer to Attachment C in the agenda packet. Now I'll move on to the next slide. So this is a similar waterfall chart, but this is showing our amended revenues. Since the budget was adopted, we have seen an increase of 45.1 million in revenue, and on the next slide, we'll provide more details of these adjustments. This table shows changes to revenue by fund. The bulk of the 38.7 million in carryovers in the general fund is related to revenue for the RISE project. This revenue is for fees that have not been collected yet, and is related to the expenditure carryovers that we saw on a previous slide. Additionally, in the general fund, we also have carryovers related to the American Rescue Plan Act for revenue that has not been recognized yet. In the capital projects fund, the $4.9 million carryover is primarily related to grants and donations for capital improvement projects that are being carried over. And then in terms of adjustments approved by city council, the $800,000 adjustment in the general fund is primarily related to construction plan check revenue that was approved in the first quarter. In the capital projects fund, the half a million adjustment is related to the memorial park specific plan. Overall, these adjustments and carryovers bring the amended revenues as of December 31, 2022 to 175.3 million. Now that we've gone through this summary by fund, let's focus on the general fund. Next slide. One of the first steps in analyzing a budget is to conduct a trend analysis, comparing our current performance to previous fiscal years. This allows us to determine whether we are on track to end a year within our budget, and if not, what factors are contributing to these variances. By understanding these factors, we can determine if any additional adjustments are necessary to ensure we end a year within budget. In this graph, the blue bars represent revenues, and the red bars represent expenditures. We can see that at the mid-year point- We can see that at the mid-year point in previous fiscal years, revenues had been between thirty-four and fifty-two percent collected at mid-year, whereas this year, we are slightly lower at thirty-three percent. Similarly, expenditures have been between forty-four and fifty-two percent spent at mid-year, whereas this year, we are slightly lower at thirty-nine percent. I'll provide more information on the next slide. On this slide, we'll take a closer look at each revenue category to try to understand the major sources of variance. Each category is discussed in greater detail in the staff report, but in this presentation, I'll just focus on the categories highlighted in red boxes. First of all, sales tax is down by six point nine million or twenty-eight percent compared to last year. However, this decline was mainly due to the timing of payments from the CDTFA or California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. This is because the city has paid two months in arrears. So last year, at this, at the end of February, we had received payments for July to December. However, for this year, we've only received the payments for July to November. And so the December payment, we expect to receive that sometime this month. So therefore, assuming no impacts from the CDTFA sales tax audit, we are on track to meet a year-end projection for sales tax of thirty-one point nine million. The next category I'll be talking about is transient occupancy tax or hotel tax. This is a tax charged on hotel stays in the city. And this category is up by one point five million or a hundred and eleven percent. And this significant increase is due to the return of business travel after COVID-19 restrictions were relaxed. Transient occupancy tax is on track to meet a year-end projection of five million dollars and is projected to recover to pre-COVID levels by next fiscal year. The next two categories are intergovernmental revenue and transfers in, and these are down because last year, we had a strategy for the American Rescue Plan Act dollars where we recognized and distributed those dollars to various departments. Moving on to the next slide, we'll be discussing expenditures. We see increases in compensation and benefits primarily due to negotiated cost of living adjustments or COLAs that were approved by city council in August. We see that contract services have increased by one point three million or twelve percent, and this is primarily due to an increase in the city's law enforcement contract with the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office. And lastly, transfers out have also decreased due to one-time transfer of funds related to the American Rescue Plan Act funding strategy. This is similar to the decrease in transfers in that you saw on the revenue side. Moving on to the next slide, I'll be talking about fund balance. So the city's fund balance serves as its savings account, and there are several categories of fund balance, including non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Non-spendable funds include loan receivables. Restricted funds are funds that have external restrictions, for example, a Section 115 pension trust is restricted for pension purposes. Committed funds are designated for specific purposes by formal action of the city council, for example, an economic uncertainty reserve or the capital projects reserve. Assigned funds are earmarked but are not restricted or committed, for example, incumbences. And finally, unassigned funds have no specific purpose. As of mid-year, the general fund is projected to end fiscal year 2223 with a hundred and twenty-one point five million in total fund balance. This is an increase from the adopted budget of a hundred and ten point one million, and this is due to last year's revenues exceeding expenditures at year end. While the city has typically recommended a transfer of unassigned fund balance from the general fund to other funds, for example, the capital projects fund at mid-year, staff is not recommending any transfers currently due to the uncertainty regarding the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration or CDTFA sales tax audit. The audit's outcome could significantly impact the city's sales tax revenues, making it prudent to wait for more information before making any decisions. Given this uncertainty, staff anticipates bringing recommendations on the use of this unassigned fund balance to city council once more information is available. The city is committed to fiscal sustainability and will continue to closely monitor and analyze revenue and expenditure trends in order to make informed budgetary decisions. Moving on to the next slide, I'll be discussing budget adjustments. The city's departments regularly evaluate their expenditures throughout the fiscal year to ensure that they can end a year within budget. In case of any variance, departments can request budget adjustments either through the quarterly reports such as this one or through separate staff reports to the city council. As of mid-year, departments are on track to end a year within budget, and so they are not requesting any adjustments at this time. Next slide. Now I'll be discussing staffing requests. Staff is recommending the addition of a limited-term special project executive position. This is a new classification in our unrepresented compensation program. There is no fiscal impact this fiscal year due to vacancy savings in the department. In addition, staff is recommending revising the Assistant Director of Community Development building official classification. This would separate this into two separate classifications as well as align the building official compensation to that of the planning manager's compensation. There is no fiscal impact either for this change. And finally, staff is recommending revising standby pay eligibility from IT assistant to network specialist, and this is due to reclassification of the employees in this position. Next slide, please. And finally, I'll be discussing the city manager's discretionary fund. So starting last fiscal year, staff reports on this, on the use of this fund every quarter. And so at the, as of mid-year, we've only used this fund once, and that is during first quarter for two thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars for environmental consulting services. Now I'll hand it over to Director Alfaro to discuss additional information, transparency, and engagement, as well as next steps and recommendations.
So we did want to take just a brief moment to discuss some additional items we've added this fiscal year. We talked a little bit about these when we brought first quarter, but it always feel like it's a good reminder. So there's now an attachment on the city's special projects. Special projects are included in the budget generally as one-time either purchases or projects, and the way we're able to keep our materials and contract line, trend lines clean is by bringing out these one-time items. And so now we're making sure we're reporting on these quarterly, the status of them, if they've been completed, if there's any anticipation that they're going to be carried over, that's included as an attachment. In addition, as part of the first quarter as well, we started to report on grants we have applied for or received or not received as part of an update to council as well. This mid-year report also has an attachment with an update on the capital improvement program. And then just a brief update on the CDTFA audit is that we still have not heard back from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Currently, we're anticipating hearing something back this month. However, I will temper that with they've given us several dates for an update, and those haven't come through, but should any new information come through, staff will work to update the city council at that time. In addition to that, on the next slide, we'll cover a little bit about our transparency and engagement efforts related to the budget. So as part of an attachment, you have the mid-year financial report. What's really neat about this report is you can drill down into the report if you go online. So if you access that QR code, it'll take you to the city's financial transparency portal OpenGov. And in the chart you see before you, or any chart that looks similar to this, you're actually able to click and get down to the account level detail for any of the link charts within the report. In addition, we do, we weren't able to do it this year, but we usually do, do budget videos, and on the OpenGov site, you'll find a variety of different budget videos available that touch on a variety of different topics. So with that, we want to cover, our next time we'll be here before you, reporting on the budget. So this is broken out into two fiscal years. Fiscal year 2223 effectively are reporting on fiscal year 2223. In the current fiscal year wraps in May of 2023 with the third quarter financial report to city council. We also begin reporting on the new fiscal year in May of 2023. Again, the budget is anticipated to print by May 1st, and then the budget study session is scheduled for May 17th, with budget adoption to occur either the first or second meeting in June of 2023. With that, we just want to go over the recommendations we have before council's consideration this evening. That includes to receive the city manager's mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2223, adopt resolution number 23, amending the underrepresented employees' compensation program and classification plan. And the reason we're asking council to approve that is we are making changes to classifications, adding a new classification that requires council approval, in addition to approving a new special project executive job classification, and again, separating out the Assistant Director of Community Development and Building Official classifications. That concludes our presentations, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Christina and Thomas. So I'm going to open up for council questions for five minutes each council, because we, I think, ask questions ahead of time too. So if we have new questions or questions you would like us public to know, this is the time to ask. Do we have, any council members have questions? If, oh, Vice Mayor Mohan?
Just a couple of questions. The city manager's discretionary fund, how much is there? I know you, there was a slide which said twenty-six hundred dollars were used for something.
Through the mayor, I believe the cap is at seventy-five thousand dollars, and we've used roughly a little over two thousand dollars last September.
Oh, and will that carry over into the next year?
I don't think so. It's seventy-five thousand dollars for every fiscal year.
Okay.
Any more questions? Vice Mayor Mohan?
I'll come back. I seem to have forgotten.
Councilmember Furun?
Yeah, it's more of a comment. I just wanted to thank staff for a really useful budget preview. It frankly leaves me with no questions to ask today, so it was extremely efficient. Thank you.
Chief Vice Mayor Furun, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you for the report. I did quickly look up the 21801 Stevens Creek Boulevard Phase 1 ESA, and I'm kind of hoping that we'll perhaps come up with some policy around, around this item, and I'm not sure what I can say about this, but I feel like it should somehow tie into a real estate policy, perhaps. And maybe it should be somewhere else other than the city manager discretionary fund. So I've not really been a supporter of the discretionary fund because it doesn't have much control over it, and also with the budget, I've had some questions about the contingencies that were added and the method of calculating them, because the contingencies within the budget, just for information, it's two and a half percent times contract services plus materials for across the board. And then, so it makes it a little difficult for me to be able to follow that. So just if staff would consider what's the best place for something like this Phase 1 insight assessment, that might help. Looking at the agenda packet on page PDF 58, Attachment C, I'm just curious what the year-end soft close, what that means. Someone could share with me that. And then also on the following page, I think the increased appropriations for the historical society, those are, it would be forty thousand dollars now. We had, we were considering twenty, and it, it ended up being forty thousand. So I'll start with those two questions, and then I have a question about the park dedication total that was in here on PDF, PDF 57.
So through the mayor, I'll take the first question, and I'll probably direct it to Director Alfaro. So Councilmember Moore, your suggestion on the city manager's discretionary fund is fully taken into consideration. The reason for that expenditure was within the scope of a city manager's discretionary fund. The fund is purposely intentionally to provide funding for any last-minute or on-plan activities or emergencies should you, should the city manager has the discretion to allow that expenditure to be taken out of that fund. But I definitely hear you that there should be a real estate policy which is not the intent of the discretionary fund purpose. It's a different topic, but I dear, I heard your concern. So in terms of the specific questions, budget team, hopefully you caught those two questions?
I can take the first one on soft close, and then I'm going to point it over to Thomas for the other ones. So year-end soft close is a term we use for when we close out the fiscal year, and what that effectively does is take any open POs or incumbences and carry them over into the next year. So effectively, when you see year-end soft close, those are the encumbrance carryovers. And I'll double-check to see if that's a listed item in the system or if that's something we can, excuse me, we can update for next fiscal year, so it's a little more descriptive for folks that are looking at it.
That would help, because I don't recall ever seeing that, that little bit of information. Okay, thank you.
Related to the question about the historical society, I will look further into it, but I believe it may have been that there was originally twenty thousand budgeted, and then it was an increase by twenty thousand to make the total forty thousand.
Exactly. Okay, and then the last question was PDF 57. I'm not sure that on the second, second set of rows down, that the total park dedication funds are, that that is correct. So I am, would like to see that double-checked. Where I get a little bit confused is when I'm looking at this, this budget carryover, your Fund 280 park dedication, I've got, you've got a total there, but at the bottom of that, of that column, summing those ones up, you're saying total park dedication funds, but I think it should be labeled something else.
Yes, you're correct. That should be total special revenue funds.
Perfect. Okay, and then I want to double-check that, because later on in the budget, you're going to, you're going to say what the park, the total in the, in the park dedication fund is, and that's like around twenty million dollars. So I want to make sure that, that what I'm seeing here is only showing about nine million dollars, but I want to make sure we really do have the, it's like nineteen million plus. So I want to make sure that that is, is accurate. Okay, it is.
Hey, any more questions from the council? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Mohan.
The CDTFA audit you said could be, could come out any, anytime now, right? If it did, would it have any effect on the current year's budget?
It may. So currently, we don't know what that's going to look like for us, so it may have an impact on the current year budget. It may also have an impact to prior years, and it may also have a go-forward impact. We just don't know what that looks like until CDTFA lets us know.
Okay. For sure, it'll have an impact on next year's budget, but.
I'm sorry, is it for sure it would have?
It would have an effect on next year's budget if it didn't.
Potentially, depending on what the outcome of the audit is.
But the fact that it could go back and affect our prior years' sales tax revenues, that's concerning.
Yeah, and again, we won't know until CDTFA effectively tells us what that impact is, but we do just want to make counsel where there is some, they could potentially go back and could potentially have a go-forward impact as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more questions, I'd like to open up to public comment. Oh, Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, so for the CDTFA, I remember staff gave us some estimate for how much it might affect current year and also retrospectively. Do you have any estimate to share?
No, because sales tax is confidential. We're not able to share those numbers, any estimates we may have in public.
Okay, yeah, maybe we received the memo, as I remember, and then maybe the new council members would benefit from those memo so that they can be brought up to speed. I think the staff did give, gave us some potential scenario. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And thank you for preparing the report. It's good to see there is no adjustment in mid-year. That means you planned well, and, and so it's, but I see that we, we are still increasing positions even though they are not, because of vacancies, we are not adding budget, but that means we still have extra positions. I recently looked at the staffing, so I hope to understand how much our staffing level has changed over the past few years. And so I hope that I'll talk to you, find some time to get some more information. to get some more information. Thank you for always being available and helpful.
Through the mayor, if I may, so Councilmember Chow, I can definitely follow up with you on the staffing level, and just to note, these are not necessarily new positions. Some of, most of them are a conversion of our existing positions to better fit the organization.
And that's okay. I just recently, I was looking at some staffing level for the City Hall, and it seems from 2012, it was 70, and then increased to 90, and then now it's 130. I may not have the right numbers, so I want to just to confirm.
Sure. Well, I'll definitely provide those information to you.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, let's open up to, Councilmember Moore?
I'm trying to think of how to word this. I'm, I'm concerned about this, the ambiguous CD TFA numbers and their impact on the budget, and my concern about that is how wise is us, is it for us to, to have these considerations without having full information? It concerns me. If anyone wants to take that?
I'll take that. Through the mayor, so your, your concern is well noted. This is something that staff is doing the best we can to prepare without knowing this, the certainty of the audit or any CD TFA decision. So your concern is well noted.
Thank you. Let's open up public comment. Do you have questions or comments? Okay.
The, the staffing for the limited-term spatial project executive, is that for the anticipated project manager for New City Hall? Or it's, that, that might be an additional position you might request?
So the proposed position is to mainly largely take care of the Valco project arise. What you're referring to might come to council for consideration at the next budget request.
I thought we already allocated a project manager for Valco project?
Probably in the prior budget year, but not in the current budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's open up for public comments. Do we have cards?
I have one speaker card from Jennifer Griffin for in Community Hall. I see no hands raised in Zoom. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, now is the time to raise your hand on Zoom or submit a blue speaker card in the next nine minutes.
Thank you to the staff. I never took accounting. My husband has a statistics degree, but everything I learned about this, I learned from coming here. So just want to commend, this was very clear for the public to try to understand. Let's start out with, I'm glad that the transient occupancy tax is coming up again. That means that we've got business travelers and people coming back to stay in Cupertino. It's been a couple of years, so we might want to see whether it's time to raise that tax again. I think it's been about four or five years, and that means that we have to look at the other cities. But I would say at this point, since we have a good crop of hotels in Cupertino and probably more coming down the line, we need to get bang for the buck. Cupertino is a place that people want to go and be at, and I think that we need to get our fair share of the income. The other thing is, because of a school shooting or stabbing in Santa Rosa, I want to look at the SROs, which is the Student Resource Officers at the high schools. I know that we pay a portion of them. I want to make sure that we have those people intact at our high schools. My brother would work with youth at risk in his job in Modesto for City, and he would go to court with juveniles. I think that SRO officers are very, very important to have in our high schools because, and I heard a report from an SRO officer from Santa Rosa. We need, we pay a portion of that, and it's time to look at that to keep our students safe. Also, Oakland has had a massive invasion of their computer privacy. We need to, I'm glad that we have a network specialist going in. We need to boost and reinforce our IT, our computer presence, to make sure that we are not victimized. Also, I just wanted to ask a question about the $38 million from the rise. If that is all for plan check, who's paying for that? Is Valco paying for that? Are we paying for that? And what are we getting for bang for our buck? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And mayor, I see no more hands raised or speaker cards submitted.
Okay, so I'll close the public comments. Do we want to answer the question offline, or?
That'll be great. Mayor Way, Director Alfaro can definitely connect with the members of the public and to answer the questions that she's brought up. Thank you, Mayor Way. Thank you.
Council discussion, and I think Councilmember Moore has her light up first. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, well, actually, I have a question, and I do appreciate the question from Jennifer Griffin regarding the Valco rise. I'd like to hear some more about that, about how that, how that funding works, and also there was a, back in, I think it was the end of 2018, there was a fee dispute letter, so I'm wondering about what potential fees might be associated with the rise. But my question is regarding the HDL contracts for transient occupancy tax, the property tax audit, and the sales tax, and what I'm wondering is whether, it's kind of, this can be answered offline, of course, whether, whether those contracts are subject to the purchasing policy maximum of 175,000 before going to council, because those, they're, they have interesting methods of payment in the contract where it's not your typical, here's your set amount that you're going to, to get, and then, and then we can add those totals up and see if they are, you know, below 175,000 or not, they're percentage-based. So I would like to understand how that purchasing policy works with those types of contracts, and one of them is, the property tax audit has an evergreen component to it, so I'd like to know more about it. And, okay, that hopefully makes sense.
Sure, I'll take the question. Thank you, Councilmember Moore, through the chair. I'll take those questions. So the first question has to do with the rise. The plan checking fees will be paid by the developer when they come in for building permits. The fee dispute is still ongoing. I wish I have more information to share, but that is where we are. In terms of your second item, I would like to say that if we can possibly take it offline, because it's not quite germane to the mid-year budget as that's presented to you, but the budget team and I were more than happy to share the information and the contract that you have requested.
Councilmember Chow, you had your lights on, but you turn it off?
Yeah, I think the questions asked by Jennifer, if, since we still have time, can we just have them answered right here? So what other questions were there? I wasn't writing it down because I thought the staff would have addressed them.
We, I don't have a good record. I remember there was the building permit, plan checking fee, there was a, a number of them, but through the mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, her own, the rise, and transient occupancy tax, raising it potentially, and then a relative push to the computer and IT.
So, so I believe those are comments. I don't think those are items that are agendized for discussion today, but the comments are noted.
We are already, we already fund SRO officer, right? Maybe we can clarify that.
I believe that can be better coordinated in a personal meeting with Ms. Griffin.
Okay, but I mean, some piece, some students were asking for the funding of SRO. My understanding is the sheriff's office still has the SRO position. They are just not, not on campus. They would be positioned around campus as needed. They will go on campus rather than before they were, I think, regularly on campus. That was the only difference. But I think we still have the same, we still provide the same fund for that.
I would rather not comment on it, as this is not really germane to the item before you today, but more than happy to have a conversation with Ms. Griffin offline.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any more discussions from the council? If not, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move to accept the...
I move to accept the mid-year budget report.
I'll second that.
Did you want me to restate it?
No. So you're moving the recommended action from the staff? Okay, and seconded by Councilmember Moore? Oh, Councilmember Chow, I'm sorry. So it's moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussions? If not, let's vote by light, please.
The motion carries with more abstaining.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. I think this ends the special meeting, so we will go to the regular meeting at 6:45. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Cupertino City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 7th. If you are able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Fruin?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Mayor Way?
Here, thank you. There is no closed session report. We're going to ceremonial items. We are going to number one, a proclamation declaring March as Youth Arts Month. We'd like to present a proclamation declaring March as Youth March Month. Do we have a copy of the proclamation?
Yes, mayor, I can present that. We have Sophia Fohas, who is the Arts Coordinator for the Santa Clara County Office of Education, who is receiving the proclamation, and she is on Zoom tonight, receiving virtually. I, just give me a moment, and I will pull up the proclamation quickly. And mayor, would you like for Ms. Fohas to say a word?
Yes, please. Ms. Forrest, please say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Way, and members of the Cupertino City Council. Thank you for your support for arts education in our schools by presenting the Youth Arts Month proclamation tonight. My name is Sophia Fohas. I'm the Arts Coordinator for the Santa Clara County Office of Education. I lead Art Spiration, SCCOE's arts initiative that began in 2007. In my role, I support districts implementing a comprehensive arts education, co-manage the Arts Ed Connect grant to teachers with Silicon Valley Creates, co-present the Silker for Arts and Education Conference with San Jose State for pre-service education students and teachers, and conduct the Young Artist Showcase, which houses the largest collection of youth arts of any county office in the state. Youth Arts Month began in 1961 by the National Art Education Association to recognize art as a critical part of a well-rounded child's education. Encouragement and commitment to the arts by students, organizations, and individuals was the goal, as well as to increase community, businesses, business and governmental support for the arts. Now, in 2023, research shows us the power of the arts as the develop, as developing a path to creative self-expression, instilling a sense of self-belonging, and developing perseverance through adversity. The positive effects of arts participation in schools are increased attendance, higher academic achievement, greater confidence, and higher civic engagement. We need what the arts bring now more than ever for each and every child and each and every educator in our school: joy, creativity, and connection. On behalf of the Santa Clara County Office of Education, and as a child who learned the violin in the fourth grade and went on to become a music teacher in the public schools, thank you for recognizing March as Youth Arts Month in Santa Clara County.
Thank you, Ms. Forrest. Well said. Art is not just an expression. It's imagination, it's expression of life, and it's also part of our life, and we are very honored to be here to recognize the Youth Arts Month. Thank you for accepting it. And shall we take a picture together?
And mayor, the video team already snapped a quick shot of the council as well as Ms. Fohas.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's give a round of applause. Okay, this concludes the ceremonial items, and let's go to post appointments and order of the day. Do we have any from the council who wants to propose a order of the day? Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I'd like to propose that we consider Agenda Item 12 before 11, so that we can finish the CIP plan, the staff can wrap up their day, because I expect we will have a lot of public comments for item 11.
Councilmember Moore?
I actually had a different idea about that, and it was because there are so many letters and so much response regarding item 11, I was wondering if we could actually reorder to put item 11 ahead of oral communications, even if, if council so wishes.
We have two motions on the table. Do we have any seconds for any one motion? No seconds for Councilmember Moore's motion, or Councilmember Chow's? If there's no motion, then we will proceed as agendized?
So, because otherwise, the, all this public works staff will have to wait and listen to all the comments until they can go home, until their item number 12. Do I not have support of the council member for that?
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, more seconds. I agree with your concerns there and wish to respect their time. Thank you.
So the motion is to move number 12 above 11?
Yeah, consider number 12 first. I don't expect that will take very long.
Okay, so we have a move and a second. Any discussions? Councilmember Fruin?
Yes, I think we have a lot of people from the public who've shown up to address item 11 in particular, and I'd like to be able to make sure that they're able to do that, rather than having to wait for us to deliberate over another matter first.
Okay, any more discussions? Councilmember Moore?
Yes, but through, through the mayor, my, my first suggestion was regarding item 11 to actually put it ahead of oral communications, if you, if you're really wanting to provide expediency to that item.
Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second. Let's vote on the motion first, unless your subsequent motion, are you doing, making a subsequent motion, Councilmember Moore?
I didn't have a second. Thank you.
Do we have a second for Councilmember to make a motion? No, so we're going to vote on the original motion. Let's vote by light, please.
The motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so we will move as agendized. So I'm going to move to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council, but not on the agenda for discussion, including information items. So do we have any oral communications cards?
Yes, mayor, I have three blue speaker cards for speaking in Community Hall, and I see two hands on Zoom, so anyone wishing to make comments under oral communications, please have your hand raised in the next nine minutes. So first, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Tessa Parish, followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start out, I heard something on the news today where England is actually authorizing their, it risks seniors to have another booster, and I believe that they said that the United States may be following, so that my parents had their boosters in October, November, and then I'm assuming that probably May or June, they would be looking to have the boosters for seniors and maybe people that were ill, just as a shout-out, because... Just as a shout-out, because we're... We all are boosted, some of us are, and then we need to know what comes next. So I just... I'm going to take a couple of seconds to just talk about an item. I'm sorry if I had misunderstood the previous special session. I think that we probably need to look at raising the TOT. That's how it was brought up the last time, four or five years ago. The city council did discuss it. The city staff looked at other cities, and I believe that they did increase it at that time. We have very healthy, very desirable hotels in Cupertino, and it may be time to get our bang for the buck and raise the TOT. The other thing is, I'd like to bring up the SROs. It's probably time to discuss those again. I believe Cupertino pays a portion of their salary. I believe the other one is by the high schools. But because there was a student that was killed in the Santa Rosa School District, and I did hear an SRO interviewed while I was driving, and my brother actually has had experience with that with at-risk youth in Modesto. I think that it's very important that we have SROs. I know that there are some people that don't think that they do anything, but believe me, they do. And if children can learn to be... To trust and have someone to talk to in a high school before they get into trouble. These are children that may feel threatened. There are other children that, for whatever reasons, they feel that they need to act out in violence. If you can prevent that at an eighth grader freshman, then you're one step ahead. And we are... I just hate to say this. I think our level of violence in our schools has just escalated. I think the SROs are very, very important. The other thing is Oakland has had a massive data breach in their city. And I hope that our city is doing everything possible to make sure that our wonderful computer and IT people are able to keep all the records, et cetera, safe in Cupertino, especially our public documents. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about was, I believe it's the item about the Chamber of Commerce, which is under... I forgot what it was under, informational. I'd like to have the Chamber of Commerce come here from Cupertino, from other cities, and give us a little discussion of what they do. I have never had them actually come and discuss what they do. I think that they're very important, and I want to have more interaction with the public so that we know what to expect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Tessa Parish, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Rhoda Frye.
Hi, good evening, everybody, City Council and staff. Today, as you know, I'm planning a vice chair of the Housing Commission, and here only speaking for myself. As you know, we recently had to do an ethics course, and I'm actually going to read an excerpt from 1234 Local Ethics here, okay? I think it's applicable. Constitutional due process principles require a decision-maker to be fair and impartial when decision-making body is sitting in what is known as a quasi-judicial capacity. As an example, a court concluded that in planning commissioner authorship of an article hostile to projects before the commission gave rise to an unacceptable probability that the decision-maker had made his mind up in advance of the public hearing about the project. Because the hostile commissioner participated in the decision, the court overturned the planning commissioner's decision as having been tainted by bias. Typically, having the official who may have exhibited bias disqualifying himself or herself avoids legal issues. Today, or I'm not sure when it was posted, Councilmember JR sent out an email to what seemed to be Cupertino For All website and instructing them...
Mayor, point of order. This item is on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. You can come back and talk about it when the item comes up.
Oh, this is reference to ethics, not about... No, you're saying that regarding item 11?
11, yes.
Oh, okay. I was talking... Okay, well, this is a general information there. You can cut me off on that and just keep the reference there.
Yes, you can come back on item 11, yes.
Thank you, Tessa. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Heather Dean. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and councilmembers. Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Moore are not following the Council Procedures Manual. Their actions at council on February 21st showed intention to stall discussions of city business to the detriment of residents. Point one, paragraph 8.8.3 of the manual states that there will be five minutes of discussion. If necessary, the mayor may allow additional time. The correct framing is that the speaker is being allowed extra time. Councilmember Moore has framed the mayor's decision as cutting off discussion. Not accurate. Discussion is properly over after five minutes. It is at the discretion of the mayor to allow extra time. Point two, the manual requires that polled routine consent items be discussed after other nonroutine agenda items. This allows staff, council, and residents to hear the scheduled nonroutine agenda items at the expected time. Because they are routine, consent items are expected to be voted as a group without discussion. All questions can be handled by staff prior to the meeting. Councilmembers Chow and Moore poll consent items regularly. They discuss each one at length. After discussion, they often use friendly amendments or substitute motions to continue discussion. Both techniques add time and stall decisions. On February 21st, Consent Items 5 and 6 were polled. Consent Item 5, about a new bench donation policy, was discussed in detail. Councilmembers Chow and Moore each put in either a friendly amendment or a substitute motion or one or two or both of those to this policy. Both techniques failed to add substance in addition to adding nearly an hour to this discussion of consent item. Since only two benches have ever been donated previously, this is not a major issue. The applicant had been waiting since last June for a decision. This council meeting had to be extended two times due to these delaying techniques. As Mayor Way stated so well, our excellent staff is capable of creating such a policy without a long discussion or suggestions from the dais. Pulled Consent Item 6, about missing data on a monthly report, was easily explained. The reason for pulling it was clearly to point out a mistake and disrespect staff. Councilmembers Chow and Moore showed us again what was meant by the grand jury report about some council members disrespecting staff, causing a hostile work environment. Since city council agendas have many nonroutine matters to consider, this poor use of time is disrespectful of everyone involved, including residents. Councilmembers Chow and Moore are both well-educated. They read the items ahead of time. All the answers are included in the written communications. Residents can see and hear what this is about: micromanagement and unwillingness to accept staff answers even though other council members have, stalling, and disrespect. Thank you, City Council, for reforming the Council Procedures Manual to place pulled consent items after the noticed agenda items. And thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you, Connie. Next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Heather Dean, followed by Lisa Warren.
Hi, good evening. I have some slides to show tonight. This is the first time I've done this. And so thank you, City Clerk, for pulling them up. This is about the public storage, again. The signage that you have the opportunity to reconsider next council meeting. And I'm so glad that we have these policies in order to fix mistakes. Could you... There's the stuff. There you go. Perfect, thank you. So up here, I just talked a little bit about the sign ordinance, and I'll probably be more organized in a couple of weeks. But anyway, the ordinance allows... Sign ordinance allows signage to not impinge upon the aesthetics of the city and especially to not inconvenience the public. So currently, there is freeway-facing signage on the Public Storage Building. I have an image of that. I'm not sure whether I took that at 11 o'clock at night or 5:00 in the morning, but it was definitely outside of the hours, operating hours. And that light actually shines directly into adjacent residences. Next slide, please. And also, you might notice that the light on that was kind of brighter than what was coming from the building. And I want to also thank Councilmember Fruein for having talked about in the previous meeting about how we need to sort of bifurcate those... It's not yours, but bifurcate the issues of the pollution from... The light pollution from the building itself versus the light pollution from the signage. I'm going to co-mingle them again a little bit, so bear with me. But I did recognize your thoughts on that. So here, I'm just showing what the setting is. We've got this huge new building. It's right across the street from condominiums. You've gotten emails from some of these folks. My slides will be in the public comment file tomorrow, if you want to look at it. And so unfortunately, when we draw these 300-foot circles around them, nobody really realized that it was built right across. So there, you see, the next slide is the building during the daylight, and then you see it at night. The last one is at night. On the left side, there's the public storage sign. So you can see it from the freeway. That photo was taken from the freeway. And then there's that bright light from the building. Now, next slide, please. So if we go to the next slide, what you're going to see is what the people who are in the condos see across the street on the left-hand side. You see, there's a really bright light. You can almost see those things that look like it's, I would say, a penitentiary. They're lockers. It would be nice if those windows were more muted. And then you can see the building, you know, over the fence, from, again, from residences at the condominiums there. To the right, you'll see what's going on behind the scenes. That is a directional sign, the top one. So there's no bright lights, nothing. That is on valley green. The next picture is the picture of the building during the daylight, the backside of the building. No light, no shining lights. And then the last one is... I think that one was around 5:00 in the morning where it's all dark. It's not bright. It doesn't face the freeway. Next slide, please. So the next one, I showed you last time. Really big sign that they're proposing. We don't want our city to look like Las Vegas. That's a little tiny picture of Las Vegas. Let's turn off the lights. Next slide, please. And I'm also showing you the differences between the building that had been proposed in 2006 versus the building that we got. And I think that this happened because of the erosion of some of our committees. Thank you.
Okay, and our final three speakers in Community Hall are Heather Dean, Lisa Warren, and Brooke Ezit. Welcome, Heather.
Hello, Council. I just wanted to thank you because I have once again been watching the council meetings. And it's a joy and a pleasure to see things progressing and not in molasses. So I just... This is... Those were professional speakers. I am not a professional speaker. But I do appreciate your work up there. I know how hard and how much homework you have. So I appreciate you moving right through. And I'm sure many of our residents do, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Brooke Ezit.
Hello. So I would like to speak about safety issues. And this is something I've mentioned before, and nothing's been... I've never gotten responses or any feedback on whether it's a good idea or not. But in the mayor's coffee this morning, it was brought up, and I've seen many emails and postings of people being very concerned about the new scramble and at Bub and McClellan, and how maybe one day people will get it, but right now, it's very dangerous. And my suggestion in the past has been, and I will repeat it, to please consider... And then follow through. That the city has a process of when there are traffic flow changes, they know they're coming. They may post it somewhere where many people don't see it or would never see it because a lot of the people driving through our city don't live in the city. So if it doesn't go to people in San Jose, Santa Clara, Saratoga, they're not going to see it. So the request is that you physically put signs on little A-frames, like I've seen in other cities, San Jose being one of them. And when they have changes coming in traffic flow that could create more of a mess and is trying to fix, at least temporarily, because people are unaware of what to do, they post upcoming traffic flow change. And then they give us place where you can go look to see what it is. And it's up there long enough, you know, weeks before the actual change so people who drive that route regularly go, oh, oh, maybe someday I should pay attention to this, and I should look it up and see what it's going to be. Because we have had change and change and change at the same intersection at Wolf and Stevens Creek over two years, I believe, period of time, where people got... Never knew what to do. They kind of figure it out finally by trial and error and maybe accidents. And then it changes again because the city's still working out the kinks. And a simple warning placed where people who are actually there see it could go a long way in improving what you're trying to improve. So that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And our final speaker in, before we move over to Zoom, is Brooke Ezit. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. On September 18th, 2018, item number 15 was Apple Inc. donation to augment public safety service levels in the city of Cupertino. Former Mayor Rod Sing's wife worked for Apple, and he stood up, recused himself, and stepped off the dais. He did the right thing, even though I don't probably agree with much that he stood for. He did the right thing, so he needs some applause for that. And thank you. And recently, the city has been served with a YIMBY lawsuit. And our current councilman, JR Fruein, has done legal work for an affiliate of this organization, according to the patent website, and then also according to another patent filing. And I think that Mr. Fruein should follow his mentor and recuse himself from any closed meetings or any votes with this lawsuit. Thank you. Oh, can I add this into record?
Yes. Thank you, Brooke. And our final few speakers on Zoom are San Ar and Janie Choi. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and honorable city councilmembers. Let me be the first to congratulate all of you coming up on three months in the new city council. Or three of you, or I should say, two of you. It is the first quarter up there on the dais. And so let me be the first to congratulate you on achieving that milestone. I'd also like to use the time to recognize the tireless work of our city staff. In my day-to-day dealings, I have an opportunity to interact with a number of city staff, and I'd like to use my time to recognize our hard-working city staff. So I'd like to start first by recognizing the hard work of Rachel Sander from the Parks and Rec Department. Rachel works tirelessly to balance input from the public and residents with all of the work that staff have to manage. I want to call out Rachel. She's been consistent in her going above and beyond in meeting the needs of the community. I also want to recognize the work of Robert Kaufman. Robert does a fantastic job working with the youth of Cupertino. Not many recognize that Cupertino is unique in the events it offers for our youth. On a monthly or bimonthly basis, the Team Commission, as well as the Youth Activity Board, run a number of events for our youth, and Robert single-handedly manages many of those. I want to give a shout-out, and I hope you will recognize Robert Kaufman for his work. I also want to recognize the great work of our Safe Routes to School Commission, and particularly the work of Sheri Wacoviac and Bridget Werner on the Safe Routes to School. We continue to see a number of code violations, particularly around RV parking around and by target. And I want to recognize the work of Devastas from Code Enforcement in trying to make sure that our community is free of illegal parking violations. And finally, I would like to, as I close out my remarks here, I would like to call on each of you to think about your legacy in the long term. Three months may feel like a lot. You have three years ahead of you. Some of you have another term perhaps, which would be another seven years ahead of you. I hope you will think about what your legacy will be 10 years from now, 15 and 20 years from now. You will have sharply divided opinions on both sides. I appeal to you to look at the average resident of Cupertino and make sure that the average resident's desires and aspirations are kept in mind. Not everyone has an opinion on one side or the other. Many of us are just trying to deal with day-to-day life, dealing with... life, dealing with traffic, dealing with crime, dealing with school drops and picks, and the average day-to-day issues. And I request each of you to please keep us the average residents in mind. And I want to thank you for the challenging work that you have up there on the dais. It is not easy. All of you try your best. And all I will say is, please think about the decisions you make in the context of time. How will that decision be viewed 10, 15 years from now? And what are you doing to make the lives of the average residents easier and smoother? And finally, as I finish out my comment, I do want to say to all of you, please take the time to engage with residents. I appreciate the morning coffee. However, parents doing school drops cannot do the morning coffee with Mayor Wei, so I hope you will have an afternoon or evening.
Thank you, San. That is your time.
Thank you very much.
And our final speaker is Janie Choi. Welcome, Janie.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wei, councilmembers and city staff. Thank you so much for all of your work in support of nature. I understand that the council has directed staff to refine the tree canopy list to include California native plants and native trees in this case. I'm really pleased to hear that, because we desperately need to make changes in our urban environment to create habitat wherever we can. The city of Cupertino has an urban tree canopy of 23%, which means there's a lot of opportunity to help ameliorate climate change by planting trees. Not just any trees, but native trees that check all the boxes of carbon sequestration, air quality improvements, noise abatement, shade, and crucial habitat for all of the insects and birds that evolved together in tandem. California is one of the great biodiversity hotspots in the world, and as such, we are blessed with many native trees, tree species, big and small, that are suited to be street trees, that are, that can be added to this tree list. From our own local Valley Coast Live and Blue Oaks on the bigger end of the spectrum, to the smaller scrub oaks, Western red bud, mountain mahogany, and many more. According to the historical ecology of the South Bay done by the San Francisco Estuary Institute, the area that is now Cupertino was oak woodland, oak savanna, and chaparral. Today, almost half of the city of Cupertino, about 48%, is covered by impervious surfaces. Let's think about how we can bring more nature back to the remaining half. With Cupertino at the heart of Silicon Valley, with all the technological marvels we've created, I am positive that we can apply some of that creativity and ingenuity towards creating an urban environment that better integrates with nature. Let's prioritize the little guys that run the world, to paraphrase entomologist Doug Tallamy. Professor Tallamy's research shows the importance of caterpillars and insects and the native plants that they've evolved with as the basis of our entire ecosystem. I also want to say that night lighting can be very disorienting and detrimental to our nocturnal insects and birds. Streetlights and other urban lighting should be kept to what is essential. Brightness should be appropriate to the need, and lights should be pointed downwards with rims on the fixture, on the lighting fixtures to prevent light from spilling out over a large area. When, ultimately, when we save nature, including the native plants, animals, and small organisms that are its components, we are really saving ourselves. Thank you again for all of your work, all the work that you're doing for nature on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank everyone who spoke at the oral communications. We appreciate everybody's input. Now, we're going to move to consent. Calendar?
Yes, pardon, Mayor. We are allowed to add future agenda items at this time during oral communications. So I appreciated the statement comments about the Chamber of Commerce. That is item 15. However, I would like to have that come forward as an item that we can actually discuss, because as an informational item, it's not up for discussion. And then I also am very curious about the definition of a freeway-facing sign that was brought up, and I'm hoping that that could come back to council, perhaps when that whole issue with public storage returns, we can hear what that definition is. And I'm hoping I have a second for both of these items.
So we have a motion for a item on the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
That's for, second for the Chamber of Commerce. And the other one is an information item?
Can I ask, thank you, Mayor Wei. So the freeway-facing sign, Councilmember Moore, we do have a definition, so we can provide a definition to the whole council via an email from me. And just for the chamber item, if I can get a clarification on what the scope for that item is to be brought back to council.
Okay. Well, personally, I'd like to see the June 21st, 2022 attachments provided so that the public will have a chance to discuss it. And there were some suggestions by the member of the public wanting to perhaps have some members of the chamber have some discussion, but I think that could be something that could come out of our discussion then, that we could see what we'd like to hear about for perhaps having a guest.
Sorry, I'm not understanding the scope for coming back. We can definitely provide the information from the June meeting. Are you asking for a presentation by chamber to come back?
No, no. The item 15 plus the attachments from June 21st, 2022, which we were not able to discuss at that time because it wasn't properly agendized. So if we could have the item come back and have the opportunity to discuss it, not as an informational item, but so that we can discuss it.
Through to Mayor, I'm sorry. I just need to understand the scope for the item being brought back. So the informational item for tonight has provided the question, the answers to the questions that you stated from last June.
Okay. So what I'm looking for is for the June 21st, 2022 item, separated out the accounts payable issue, okay? And then you can still just provide the same staff report, if you'd like, not even have to redo it, and provide the staff report memo that's in item 15 along with it. But the point of it is that we've got a member of the public that would like to talk about it. I would like to talk about it, and I see this as a way to allow public discussion. So just to clarify, if people aren't aware of this, informational items on our agenda, city council is not able to discuss those items under the new changes. So what I'm asking is for the item to return in a way that we can actually talk about it, rather than having it just as an informational item, and where we need to be silent on it, or if members of the public want to speak to it, they have to speak during oral communications, not during that particular item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there action in there or just for discussion, Councilmember Moore?
We might have direct some action. It could happen.
So, can I, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Are you going to second?
Yeah, I second that, but tonight's information item actually is a response to a request for study session to explore options of partnership with chamber. So I would, I would have expected a study session to be conducted first. So maybe that could be combined as an item together?
Pardon me, Councilmember Chow. Yeah, so I think that the city manager understands the direction, and we should probably avoid further discussion of the item this time.
Thank you. So it's being moved and seconded, so we understand it's coming back as a future agenda item.
So, Mayor, I, do I, so I think we have a request from the public to put A-frame signs in intersections when there are traffic flow changes. So I would like to see, refer to staff, whether there might be some response?
It's not only agenda item, so maybe you can talk with the
Staff can provide
Offline?
Reference to staff is appropriate, yes. Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you. Okay.
So could the staff provide response now, or it will?
Public Works staff will coordinate with the members of public separately.
Okay, so, okay. And then another question is, I think we rely on the city attorney to call to order when any of us might inadvertently not following the council procedure. And a member of the public seems to be doubting the ability of the city attorney to do that. So I want the city attorney to clarify that.
So I didn't interpret the member of the public's comments that way.
Because they are accusing us of violating procedure. So I would like to confirm, anytime you see any one of us not following procedure, city attorney will remind us of the proper procedure, right?
I will do my best, yes.
Yeah. Thank you so much for keeping us on board.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. So let's close the oral communications. We're going to consent. Calendar, city manager, do we have anybody pull the consent calendars?
City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. We have Councilmember Chow requested to pull item nine, and Councilmember Moore requested to pull items four and 10.
Pardon, Mayor. So I asked for three, four, and 10. There's a small edit to item three, the council minutes that I would like to mention.
Okay, so three?
Three, four, nine, and 10.
Three, four, nine, and 10 are being pulled. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve two, five, six, seven, and eight, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second, Moore.
Okay, is it being moved and seconded? Let's vote by light if there's no discussions. Let's vote by light. Thank you.
Excuse me, did we take public comment?
I went too fast, yes. I always forget what comes in. Okay, we're opening up a public comment for consent agenda items.
Just to clarify, this, these are the items that remain on consent. There'll be a separate opportunity for public comment on the items that the council members have pulled.
So two, three, five, six, seven, eight.
Mayor, may I make a quick comment? Would the attorney like to clarify what the public comment for consent items is so that they understand what we're doing? Thank you.
Sure. So there's a three-minute public comment period for any item that remains on the consent calendar that hasn't been pulled, so a member of the public can use those three minutes to comment on any or all of the remaining items on the consent calendar.
So the pulled ones, we have separate public comments? Yes, do we have a public comment?
She's asking when, and I can answer when they would be, they're moved after the action calendar?
So when the 10 comes up?
Correct.
Right now is for number two, three. Yes, let's do it again. Two, five, six, seven, eight. Yes.
I think this is a new procedure. Maybe it's worth to remind the public again when items are pulled, where they would be located in the agenda, and when people make comments on those pulled items.
So, so unless council takes a different action, anything that is pulled from the consent calendar will be moved after the action calendar and will be heard then.
All right. Thank you. So let's move.
I have a question, though. So is there any item that's pulled that has any time limit we have to consider today?
I will, let's, let's vote on the remaining consent first. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so now we have three, four, eight, three, four, nine, 10 that's being pulled. I'd like to make a motion to move number four, number nine, and number 10 right after this consent, before the action item, because of the timing of these three items. May I have a second, please?
Can you repeat your motion?
Yes. I'd like to move number four, number nine, and number 10 to right after, before the action items, so we can discuss and move it on, because it has some time limits, time is of essence for these three items.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chow. Any discussions? So let's.
I'm sorry.
It will become, it will come up soon. Let's vote by lights, please.
So I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't catch who seconded that motion.
Okay, Councilmember Chow.
Thank you.
So item three will come after the action items.
Number four, nine, and 10.
Four, nine, 10 will come before the action calendar.
Yes. Number four, nine, and 10. Okay, thank you. I think I voted. Did I? Not. Okay, thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously.
We're going to move to number four on the consent agenda, and that is subject considering amending the Cupertino Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 2.84, 2.90, 2.96, regarding local environmental review procedures, and to amend Chapters 2.32, 2.88, 9.20, 19.8, 19.12, 19.28, 19.104, and 19.124 regarding duties of the Planning Commission, Audit Commission, and Local Assessment Committee. Do we have staff report?
Through to Mayor, we don't have a staff report, but I'm here to answer any questions. Just a reminder for council that this is a second reading, so the conversation and discussion should remain primarily on the second reading content.
Okay, thank you. So questions from the council? We each have five minutes. If you have questions. Again, this is a second reading, so the council, us questions is going to, regarding the second reading of this ordinance. If there's no questions from the council, may I have opened up public comment? This is for item number four.
Yes, Mayor, I have one speaker card from Jennifer Griffin, and there is one hand raised on Zoom. So anyone wishing to comment on this item, please have your hand raised in the next nine minutes, or blue speaker card submitted.
You know, I, I try to follow this. I'm an educated woman. I have a BS degree in biochemistry and a computer science degree. But when we change things like this, someone had just told me that we were doing these items after the action items. Then, while I'm walking to the sit-down, we just change it so that we're going to talk about it now. We can't keep doing that. Yeah, I was on pain pills last time and started crying. I feel like crying again now. So if we're going to talk about this now, I apologize if I'm, but you can't keep doing this. You have to have consistency. So anyway, this one, yes, I'm very familiar with second readings, you know, 23 years, I keep saying that. But I am still very concerned. We are canning the LRC, the DRC, the ERC, and I believe the Audit Committee. I don't feel comfortable with how these were handled. You don't just come in after three months with a new city council and automatically ax these. These committees are extremely important. They have a history. They have a standing, and the public expects to be respected, that they know that their committees and commissions are standing. Now, if we want to have a discussion, then let's take six months. But I have never seen, believe me, the agenda always was the Holy Grail for 23 years. No one messed with it. In the last three months, we have destroyed the Holy Grail, stomped all over it, and tried, you know, you're confusing the public. I have never cried in public in my life, never at work. I was raised that women don't cry, but I was reduced to tears two weeks ago because I couldn't follow the city council agenda, and that is very, very sad. So yes, I have a big problem with these committees being axed and changed, because I don't feel like the public had any way of talking about it. And yes, there will be repercussions. The Legislative Review Committee is extremely important. I found out that I have five close family members that have served on city councils in Virginia and other states. One of them actually ran for president in another state. So I, I look back to other people in my family to set an example for me of how we conduct our business in cities. And one of them is to make sure that the public knows fully and clearly what is happening. I don't agree with all the politics in Virginia or the other state, but I can tell you that due process and civility reigns there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And our final speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Wei, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I do agree that changing it around confuses everyone, and there are already a lot of changes, so to make it a little bit easier for people, new people who don't even know the procedures, but Jennifer is very experienced, and if she's confused, what are we all supposed to be? Anyway, so I ask that at least stop juggling it for a while. And the other request is that on this item and all others that are second readings, that on the agenda item, it's a second reading, because they tend to be treated a little bit differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy, and Mayor, we have no further hands raised on Zoom, our blue speaker card submitted. No more.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so I'm gonna close the public comment period and bring you back to the council for, do we have any questions from the council?
Yeah, just one brief comment that I appreciate the commentary from Peggy Griffin with respect to trying to label second readings as such, so that nobody's confused as to what they are.
Okay, thank you, and Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I pulled this item, I think a member of the public was also interested in seeing it pulled as well. Members of the public are no longer allowed to pull consent items, and city council members must pull them before the meeting starts, or during the meeting, we're only allowed to pull one. Okay, so I had served on the Audit Committee, and on the Environmental Review Committee, and on the Legislative Review Committee. With regards to the Environmental Review Committee, we had wanted to actually expand the role of the Environmental Review Committee so that it could include the ability to discuss items like Lehigh, which has an extensive pile of environmental documents associated with it, so I, I'm quite sad to see that committee abolished, it had a lot of potential for things that we could be reviewing. Now, I also served on the Legislative Review Committee for, I believe, two years, and that provided an opportunity for us to review various pending legislation, and we had an extensive legislative platform, which had, was highly complemented, and please take a look at the LRC page, the Legislative Review Committee webpage, there's information that can still help you if you're wanting to provide input through the state portal on any pending legislation. We, we did a lot of work on, on that to help provide information that was accessible to the public, so that you could participate. Lastly, with regards to the Audit Committee, so I had served on that for two years, and I chaired it last year, and my concern with the edits that have been made to the municipal code is that originally the duties and responsibilities were for the Audit Committee to review the monthly treasures report. Now, prior to my being on that committee, it was meeting sometimes only three times a year, and sometimes four, but I think everybody can catch on, that if you're supposed to review the monthly treasures reports, you need to meet monthly. And so we began meeting monthly, and following the state law regarding the monthly treasures reports, which are the receipts dispersments and fund balances report, and the second report is regarding the investments. And so we, we, if you had read the Show Me The Money grand jury report, it was referencing one of those reports, which the city came into compliance with, and my concern is that in altering the language in the municipal code, and I'll explain what that is, is that now the municipal code says for the Audit Committee to review the quarterly investment reports. So I just described two reports, the receipts dispersments and fund balances is one report required by state law, a different code, and then you've got the investment reports. So instead of reviewing the monthly investment reports, they're only going to be looking at the quarterly investment reports, and they will not be looking at the monthly investment report, the monthly treasures report, receipts dispersments and fund balances at all. And then what happened is that we've had this alteration to, to our agenda, so if you look at the agenda for today, and you're interested in perhaps having a talk, a discussion about the monthly tre, monthly treasures report, or the monthly treasures investment report, those are put under informational items. If you wanted to make any comment on those, where our money's, where our money's going, how it's spent, maybe you had some concerns, you would have had to talk about that during oral communications in your three-minute period. Maybe you would have had, preferred to have a three-minute time on each one of these items to make some comments, but you will not be able to do that the way the agenda has been rearranged. Also, if you look at this informational items description, you'll see that there is no discussion allowed by the council. So for myself, having served on the Audit Committee for two years, and I worked very hard to understand everything that I was being given, go through all the materials and ask my questions, I can't ask them in public, and you don't get to know what I'm concerned about. And that is my issue with what's been done with regards to the Audit Committee. A long time ago, I briefly served on PTA as a treasurer, and I, one of the, the bits of advice I was given, I thought was really good, was that you need to have a second set of eyes, always have a second set of eyes. And so my concern here about what we're doing is that we're eliminating the, the coverage of these items, and we have had a 14-year embezzlement, and it's important to me that we have people reviewing these documents and having more, more touches when it, when they're getting approved, and, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Do we have any more comments, discussions? So I, I'd like to ask a couple questions, or my comments. Councilmember Moore's concerned about the reports not being reviewed by the Audit Committee, but we are, all five of us are reviewing the monthly treasures report and the monthly investment report, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so every function that's doing, I think we're still doing our due diligence, that's what I'm seeing it, my role in that too, and I also believe that a lot of things that has been changed in the audit is really, they're not changing any function that the Audit Committee needs to do. Is that a good, a correct assessment from my part?
So the proposed amendment allows the Audit Committee to review the treasures report in a quarterly fashion.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, that's what I want to make clear, I want to make sure that we are, you know, doing our due diligence as council members, you know, all of us, so, okay, so I don't have any more questions, if, oh, Councilmember Moore, Chow?
So I think Audit Committee, we have community members who have financial background, who can provide us the first set of eyes to review this financial report. When it comes to the council, it's one of 10, or maybe 15 items, even though we glance through them, if we even do, we don't have that expertise to see, and different people see different things, and I would appreciate if the Audit Committee could do that. And Audit Committee has been meeting quarterly before, but ever since we start the internal audit program, we are examining a lot of the city policies, and last year we find out there is a need to increase the frequency, I think to bi-monthly, so from four meetings to six meetings a year. And now with the change, I think it's reduced back to four meetings a year. And I think since we are continuing putting our emphasis on internal audit, there are, the consultant has proposed program that we adopted for 2022, 23, and then next year we will have different focus every year, so I hope that when it comes to the council, the Audit Committee already spent sufficient time to ask questions and vetted them, that, which is why we have comedian commissions, otherwise everything can come to the council. So I do, I am concerned about the reduction of responsibility and the second set of eyes through Audit Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Mohan?
I just wanted to reiterate the responsibilities of the Audit Committee, I am the vice chair currently, and we have discussed this on many previous occasions. There is no reduction in terms of workload for any of the staff, we are basically going back to the Audit Committee as it was two years ago. Councilmember Chow? We do meet six times, four times for the quarterly meetings, plus two additional sessions to review the, the audit report. So that is the, the current regulations as we've laid it, laid out, and everything that we are doing is consistent with the functions and the obligations that the Audit Committee is supposed to perform. We have, we want to make sure that there's no bottleneck, that there's a streamlined procedure, and that we're not holding anything up for the sake of the staff, as well as for the sake of the, the public. We will get to review every single document here at, at city council, the treasures reports, the treasures investment report, and the accounts payable register. What we have tried to do is not do an overreach of our functions, but stick to what was laid out in the municipal code as the functions that are directly tied to the Audit Committee. We have made no change which, which implies that there's a, we're taking shortcuts, that there's a reduction in, in a workflow, or reduction in, in just the work. So I just wanted to make a clarification.
Vice Mayor Mohan, you have about 30 seconds?
I would like to have the, the line in the municipal code showing the change that was made to clarify, because I understand this item very well. The, the line in the municipal code, which has been there for many, many years, stated originally that the Audit Committee would review the monthly treasures reports, now it has been changed to the quarterly treasures investment reports, that's the change. The treasures investment reports are the reports from Chandler Asset Management and US Bank regarding the bonds which the city has invested in, that's what those two reports are. The Audit Committee most definitely has reduced their workload, they've reduced the number of meetings, we were meeting 12 times a year so that we could meet with the schedule, and we provided that, that information on time, and we even developed the time of the month that we needed to review those items before they would get to council, so that we would stay on schedule following the state statute and regarding both of those reports. So there, there have been some statements here which need to be corrected.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. So the.
Let me clarify, yeah, that's true, this municipal code change, current code without the change, the Audit Committee would review the monthly financial report, that's in the code, and if we adopt the change today, the Audit Committee will not review the monthly financial report, as a result, this report, statement that the report will go to the council directly, and as an information item that no one can speak on in that meeting. And, but with the change, the Audit Committee will only review a quarterly investment report, which is a different report, which is a report that just report on your investment portfolio. So why do we need that change? I don't understand, yeah. Why is that necessary?
So, um.
Why is that not a reduction of work? And maybe the Audit Committee who made this recommendation can explain?
So.
So this is a recommendation made by the Audit Committee, I would remind council that this is the second reading, so if council would like to explore further amendment to the ordinance, you will have to come back and take, revise the ordinance amendment again, so today's consideration is purely on the second reading.
Okay, thank you.
So Mayor, can I? So I think, thank you for that, I think the reason this item did not really catch my attention last time is because this item is multiple items lumped together, so every time I only have attention to, for some of the items, the elimination of committee and consolidation.
Point of order that we aren't counting time any longer?
Yeah, no, I, I understand, yeah.
So sorry for not catching that last time, but when we lump items together, this happens.
All right, thank you. I think everyone has their five minutes to pitching, unless Councilmember Fron has anything to say, if not, I think.
No, I would just encourage us to adhere to our, our regulation on time.
All righty, thank you. So I'd like to call for a vote of, that's, we have a motion? Do we have a motion on the, after all this discussion, so I'm a little confused. No, so we need a motion and a second?
Mayor, through the mayor, I would like to make one final comment, and that is, we've also done away with the Economic Development Committee.
I, I do believe, Councilmember Moore, you have five minutes, and these are all being discussed on the first reading, so I really don't see any new information coming out of it, so I'd like to move this item forward, so we are going to entertain a motion and a second. Councilmember, oh, Vice, who's, Vice Mayor Mohan, sorry, I wasn't looking.
I will make a motion to adopt the second ordinance, number 232247, repealing, etc. Can we just sort of, do I have to read the whole thing out?
No.
Can we?
Madam City Clerk will read the motion. Would you read the motion, please? Yes.
So it's not necessary, but I will read it just for the Vice Mayor, so moving to adopt ordinance number 23-2247, repealing municipal code chapters 2.84, 2.90, 2.96, adopting municipal code chapter 17.02, and amending municipal code chapters 2.32, 2.88, 9.20, 19.08, 19.12, 19.28, 19.104, and 19.124, the title of which is as follows, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino to repeal municipal code chapters 2.84, 2.90, and 2.96, to adopt municipal code chapter 17.02, and to amend municipal code chapters 2.32, 2.88, 9.20, 19.08, 19.12, 19.28, 19.104, and 19.124 regarding city commissions and committees.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, so we're going for a vote by light, please?
The motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
All right, thank you, let's move to number, item number nine, which is consider a four-year contract with Nomad Transit LLC via for the transit and intercity rail capital program, TIRCP funded via expansion into the city of Santa Clara with two cities in Mountain View, two sites in Mountain View, deployment of an electric vehicle, fleet, construction of necessary charging stations, and a resolution authorizing execution of a master agreement with Caltrans, which is a funding prerequisite of the TIRCP grant program. Do we have a staff report?
We have a staff report included in the packet, but we do not have a presentation, but we have public works staff and myself, and also Assistant City Manager to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, so I'll open up for council questions, each council has five minutes, then we'll go to public comment. Council questions? If not, I'll go to public comment.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Chow, you have a question?
So I pulled this item because this item is requesting almost $1 million extra in our budget for four years. I think it's important for, this kind of item should not be approved on consent, even though it's a really good program, and then also that I, I have some question regarding our cost share with Santa Clara, but so I would like the staff But so I would like the staff to give a brief overview of what this expansion is involved, and why we are doing the expansion, and what kind of grant we have available.
So I will provide a very high overview and Public Works, and feel free to jump in. So this is a continuation of the Via program, and as part of the program, we're expanding the services to City of Santa Clara, which council has considered last year, and also potentially two sites in Mountain View, which includes El Camino Hospital and also the Caltrans Station. This is requested through the riders and also as part of the intent of the program to provide additional stops to further expand the Via program. Again, very high level, feel free to jump in, but hopefully that gives you a snapshot of why the request is coming to council. And in response to Councilmember Chow's ask to put this on the action item, staff is following the recently adopted policies and procedures to have qualified items to be placed on the consent calendar, and this is a contract agreement that's been brought to council.
But it's a contract agreement with pretty significant budget amendment. It's not already budgeted. I just want to point that out. And could you also clarify about the charging station that actually the city will have to install in order to support the program at our cost for now? Your mic.
Can you hear me now? My apologies. This is my first in-person council meeting in several years. Good evening, Councilmember Chow, Chris Corral, Senior Transit and Transportation Planner in the Public Works Department. As you may recall, in September, we gave a presentation to the council regarding a grant application from CalSTA, the State Transportation Agency. And this budget allocation request this evening is for the local match for that grant. It's approximately $8.5 million from the state. And what you'll see in the budget attachment to the staff report is a chart that shows a breakdown of each participant's contribution. So Cupertino's is shown alongside the TIRCP revenues anticipated as well as revenues from Santa Clara over a four-year period.
Thank you. So if there's no more questions, let's go for public comments. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card from Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy. And anyone wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom or submit a blue speaker card in the next nine minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I'm really disappointed that this was not put under discussion for the public. This is an enormous contract. It's between the city and Sunnyvale that has twice the population and I don't know how many times the area. It also, the report indicated that ridership in Via has significantly increased since the last September presentation. That would have been nice public information to have presented. It also, the areas and the stops that are being added, if this thing is presented, people will see where Via goes or where it will go and will sign up. I'm excited. El Camino Hospital, Mountain View, Caltrain, so you can get the bullet train. These things are public interest items, and the contract is so huge that it should have been discussed. Also, the EV stations. I had sent in a question that said, asked whether or not they would go out to bid. The answer, Chad Mosley replied right away, they are going out to bid. But these are, these are things that the public is interested in, and it affects our lives, and if you want people to use this, you want to publicize it. And one of the ways to do that is to put it on the agenda for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And I see no further speaker cards in Community Hall, Mayor, but we have one hand raised on Zoom. So I'll move to Zoom. Kelly Wang, welcome.
Hello, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Kelly. I'm a Urban Planning Master Student at NYU, and I'm from Cupertino. I wanted to say that this is a great development for the city of Cupertino to look for more alternative options for transit, and I'm really happy to see this. The ridership has been going up on Via. Going forward, I think that it's really important for city and staff to potentially collaborate with VTA on this. This is going from, you know, one small city shuttle to a much bigger effort involving your neighbors, and it's a pretty big lift for one or two cities to do alone. The other thing is that these kind of on-demand rideshare tend to not scale as efficiently when they get very big. So it may be, it may be, in this sort of thinking long-term, it may be a good idea to think about partnerships with VTA. I know that they're planning decent bus service with their visionary network initiative. I think that those are really good options as well to explore getting more service into the West Valley and more opportunities to potentially integrate with VTA buses and Caltrain. And finally, by plugging into a bigger county, regional initiative, might be able to find new sources of funding as well. So thank you, guys, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Kelly. And Mayor, that is, that is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Kirk. I apologize to Councilmember Moore, I didn't see your hands, your lights on over the question. You can ask the question and comment at the same time.
Okay, thank you, Chris, for your work on this and for getting the grant. I think that that's totally awesome. You got over $8 million coordinated with Santa Clara, and I'm really happy about that. I'm having a little trouble locating. I'm reading about this attachment C with regards to the ridership, and I'm hoping I can find it because I couldn't between the agenda packet and going through the searchable agenda packet. I don't know if something got moved, but if you could provide that for council offline, I would appreciate that. My one question is more of a Chris question with regards to the actual contract. And my concern is if our insurance limits amount that we have are, if you would, I'm actually would prefer if you would go over them. One of them was regarding cyber issue, but the item before it was actually sexual misconduct, and I thought perhaps that amount at 1 million versus the 5 million on cyber, that just sort of, you know, stuck out to me that maybe those numbers could be adjusted somehow and increased what that, what that would be to make sure that there's adequate coverage provided. If you would take a look at that and before this is signed, provide some recommendations. It doesn't need to come back to council, I was just concerned about that, because we have, I've had a lot of parents really thank us for the Via shuttle system because they feel very comfortable with their, with their children using the system. And, and so they look at the name, they look at the city logo on the vehicle, and they feel very safe and secure. So I want to make sure that they are properly insured and that we've looked into that and made sure they are also.
Yeah, so, 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 so I will take a look at that. I do not need specific council direction to look at the form of the contract, so we can take a look at those terms.
Okay, I guess I just, it was just those two items. It almost seemed like maybe we wanted to switch them, and whatever your opinion is on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
It's actually a question. Earlier, I was trying to ask question to get some information out since we didn't have a staff presentation. My question is regarding the cost share agreement. Let me share my screen. Just a minute. Okay, so here is a map, the expanded map. As we can see that Cupertino, we used to cover only Cupertino and Sunnyvale Caltrain. Now we would cover Santa Clara, which is twice, almost twice as large, and their population is almost twice of Cupertino. And we will be adding a Mountain View Station. I understand that they have a bullet, mini bullet chain that only stops there, it doesn't stop in Sunnyvale Station and El Camino Hospital. So it's a great program, fully supported, and really thanks staff for getting the grant. And it's a great staff report as well as ridership data, a lot of information. And I, and thank you for this four-year outlook of the budget that we need. So the, this first one, this, this row is the grant we have. And for Cupertino, this is, we would need to fund it for almost $1 million a year. My question is regarding Santa Clara. I understand, okay, maybe first year they are ramping up, their cost share is smaller, but after four years, their, but their population is almost twice of ours. So how is the formula determining the?
So when, when Via modeled the, the service, the service that was part of the grant application, they had to account for two things. One is that in Santa Clara, they did not want to cover their entire geography. They wanted, they don't have the same background with Via that Cupertino does in the pilot program, so they wanted to start small. So the map that you showed is less than half of Santa Clara for the first zone, the green zone, and that would be the zone for the first three years of the program in Santa Clara. And then that upper portion is an additional, approximately a quarter of Santa Clara's land area. So even at the end of year four, they won't be covering their whole city. And the other part of the question I think that you're getting at is that it took us a long time to build up our ridership in Cupertino, and Via anticipates that it'll take the same amount of time in Santa Clara really for word of mouth to spread and ridership to grow. And that's why the, that's why the costs are lower and they scale up. And if you look in year four, they're actually higher in Santa Clara than in Cupertino.
Yeah.
If we were to renegotiate and continue the program, it would be more, it would be more in perpetuity.
So do you anticipate maybe adjusting the cost share every year based on the rider usage or not? I'm just curious.
Sure, these are, these are not to exceed amounts. And we, the, the local match, so the portion that Cupertino and Santa Clara spends, if it's not spent, can be carried over to the next year.
So they will calculate how much Cupertino rest, maybe destination from Cupertino, how many this rides start from Santa Clara and determine a cost sharing?
Yes, and to give an example, when council approved this project in Cupertino in 2019, there was a not to exceed amount set of 1.75 million for 19 months. We're still using those same funds because of COVID and because of ridership swings years later, years beyond what was anticipated. So that could occur here if the demand doesn't meet the.
But as our ridership is going up, which is great, but the cost also goes up. So that means if we hit the cap for year one, what does that mean? Then we will reduce the service or we can exceed that, and you will come to the council to allocate more funding for that particular year?
There are some mechanisms that can be used. If, if it gets to that point, we could discuss with council. One would just be waiting and allowing the wait times to grow a little bit longer. Right now, they're very fast, 10 minutes on average. They could become 15 minutes. Or another mechanism is the fare could be raised, or we could consider other fare models. We would come back to council if that ever occurred, and of course, another option would be adding hours.
Another question I think asked by a lot of seniors is, for Via, it's on demand, there is no way to schedule a ride beforehand, for example, for a doctor's appointment. You might not know if the Via would come in the right time. Is there a possibility of considering a scheduled ride?
We've been talking to Via about that, actually. We're hoping that they can add that into the program at some point in the future.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Madam Moore?
Yes, thank you, Chris. I did finally actually locate the, the rider data. I think this is, I got the right page. But what I'm looking for was something that had been provided earlier, which was the cost per ride. I'm not sure if that's, if that's in here.
I have that.
Okay, so if you could, if that's, is that in this report? Because I'll go dig some more, because I just want to see what the trends are, and because I can compare them with what, like, the VTA buses are.
It is in the report, but I have a late-breaking cost per ride that I just got today.
Okay, and then there was a, kind of like a heat map that was done in the past, which was showing the origination of the routes and where they were going. And I'm wondering, kind of, at some point, would we want to have a discussion about the fairness of that? If you remember the heat map with where it was started and going? Okay, so that, if we could have that information, I think that might help. And then maybe we want to have an update, you know, I would assume you're going to come back, give us an update in a year.
Yes.
About how things are going. Okay.
Absolutely.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Any comments from Vice Mayor Mohan and Councilmember Fron? So I just want to make a brief comment. This project has been on the horizon. We run this since 2019, and with the COVID stopped and came back. And I want to thank Assemblymember Lowe for getting the $8 million for share with, between Santa Clara City, not Sunnyvale, and Cupertino. And the staff report is very complete, so I trust the staff can do the implementations and come back to council if there are issues or come back with reports as necessary. So thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
I think the grant did not come from Assemblymember Evenlow or the senator. The staff actually, they didn't get on the senator's list, but the staff actually got a state grant. So they actually went, applied the multi-different ways, right? Maybe you can clarify that.
No, I think, I misunderstood. Assemblymember Lowe gave the $5 million for the bridge. This $8 million is from the, yes, thank for the staff for applying for it. Thank you. And because Via's service has been very successful, and I think Sunnyvale City is also thinking maybe they eventually may want to pitch in, so to expand is really a very good for all our cities. So we have a, this is an action item because we pulled it out. May I have a motion, please?
I'm happy to move the item.
Okay, as recommended.
As staff recommendation.
May I have a second? We have a move in a second. If there's no more, no more discussions, please vote by light.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we move to number 10. Consider a contract with Plaistworks for the remainder of housing element. And we do have a staff report that we read, so we are not going to, so we can open up for council questions before public comments?
Yes.
Okay, council questions, please. Oh, Councilmember Moore?
I'm not sure who to, who to direct the question to. I was looking at the staff report for when we had contracted with EMC, and there, the total was the 748,000, but it said that it included Heart of the City and an EIR in that total. And I'm seeing here that 487,445 was, which was expended. So I'm going to assume that we did get some progress on their EIR in there, nothing?
We do not.
Okay, that's too bad. Okay, and the other question is that they mentioned two grants that we received for, for the project. And I was wondering if someone could mention those two grants? It was like, one was like LEAP, something like that? Yeah.
So the mayor, I'll take care of it. So this is the LEAP and the REAP grant, which were offered by HCD to facilitate the preparation of housing element for any jurisdiction. The grant amount were determined by the population size and whatnot. This is over what we call the over-the-counter grant, but I still want to comment on CDD staff for pursuing and also obtain the grants.
Okay, thank you. And so we still have that grant money, I would assume?
I believe that we recently just got both of the money coming in. But the way state works is that these are reimbursables. So we would have to pay for the prior consultant's work and then get reimbursed by the state through these grants.
Okay, and with regards to the grants, one of the things I was thinking, because we're mentioning so many of them, if perhaps we could have maybe a semi-annual update on letting us know all the good things that you've done with regards to getting these grants in and just have them summarize them, because we've gotten, you know, several million dollars worth of, worth of grants, which is a pretty. which is pretty, pretty impressive. My last question on, with regards to EMC is, when did, when did they stop working for the city?
October of last year.
October, okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Now I'm going to open up to public comment.
Yeah, just a couple very, very quick ones to Luke. These are ones you should know the answer to. You know, how many requests for proposals have been initiated for consultant for the housing element since 2020?
I believe there were three. One was a very comprehensive proposal that was done, probably went out to about 90 firms or so. There were two follow-ups after that. And I also think there was a lot of work by staff to follow up and communicate directly with firms to encourage submittals.
And how many bids were received in each RFP period?
In total, to best of my knowledge, there were four received and two firms were actually interviewed. This was summer, probably July, August 21.
Thank you.
Okay, so no more questions from the council? Let's open up a public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, so far we have one blue speaker card from Jennifer Griffin. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please raise your hands on Zoom or submit a blue speaker card in the next nine minutes.
Thank you, everyone. This is a very important item. I spent a year of my life last year, especially two months when my mother was in the hospital, critically ill in June. I attended all the meetings except for one in May when we went to Florida. I appreciate the staff at Luke and everyone taking the time to try to forge our way, their way through this monumental task that has been thrust upon every city in the state by HCD. I appreciate the fact that the city has worked very, very hard. We have spent a lot of money on consulting fees to try to take on the sixth RENA cycle. I have stated before that I have a great deal of problem with the RENA numbers. They were fouled at the beginning and they continued. And it just got worse as we go along. But then, this is where we are. I think it's very, very important that the public realize that a certification by HCD is not something that comes easily. We don't know when it's going to happen. I have been following Southern California very, very carefully. And there are still cities in Southern California that have not been certified. They have either turned in documents, they have tried very far. They have spent millions of dollars on consulting fees to try to achieve certification. I am very, very concerned that HCD has a very cozy relationship with some of the groups. And I don't feel comfortable that there's a lot of separation between the harassment of cities, especially with the, what is this called, the builder's remedy? Los Altos Hills had already submitted a housing element, and they still had someone come in and try to do a builder's remedy. Therein lies the situation. I spent a year of my life doing my duty, as we all try to do, sitting in meetings. And I found that every single time we got to a point that everyone understood what was going on, HCD sent down more rules that no one understood. They were like making them up as we went along. And I have been coming to these meetings long enough. I'm a trained chemist. I took a lot of recombinant DNA classes, et cetera, at San Jose State. And I am very, very, I suspect that there is a lot more going on that the public and the cities don't understand. We will trudge forward with this, but I do not know. I could not say if HCD will give us a certification because I think there's too much play going on there. They already are beginning to start calculating the seventh RENA cycle. This is happening in Southern California, and I've heard rumblings of it up here. And they are trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Seven, San Diego has pushed their Sustainable Development Area out two miles. We have to proceed cautiously. We don't know what we're dealing with. Thank you.
Mayor, I see no further speaker cards or hands raised on Zoom? No.
I'm going to close the public comments for now and then come back to council for discussion.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
More seconds, but I have a question.
Okay, so if we move second, Councilmember Moore, you have a question? Yes, Councilmember Moore seconded, or Councilmember of Vice Mayor Mohan seconded?
I seconded, but it can go either way, whatever. I'm happy.
Okay, Councilmember Moore seconded.
So my question is, I, I thought that we were simply doing the housing element update. Are there, and so, I'm sorry, I was taken by surprise that the, the health and safety element update is in here, task two. Are there any other portions of the general plan that are being updated by this contract? And could someone explain why we're updating the health and safety element? Or is that just an optional task?
Yeah, the health and safety element is required to be updated as part of the housing element. So that, that was actually in the previous scope of work for EMC as well.
Okay, thank you. So I don't, I just don't recall having, having that part mentioned. It seems like it would be fairly common sense that you would add that. Could you explain why it's there briefly, high level? Why, why would the health and safety element need to go along with the housing element?
I think you, you've had a number of more recent laws, things related to climate change, safety related to wildfires, things like that mostly, preparing evacuation plans, vulnerability analysis. So a lot of those things are now folded in as being required in, in this new housing element cycle.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm, I'm taking a course right now on California climate change, and everything seems to relate to that. So thank you for, for that information.
Councilmember Fu?
Yeah, I just want to thank the city manager for working very diligently to get us a, a high caliber firm that I think can deliver us a, a housing element that will actually meet state standards and that will help us build the housing that we actually need in the city. I really appreciate the effort. Thank you also to staff.
All right, we have a motion in a second? Are we ready to vote?
I'd like to comment.
Sure.
So, yeah, I'd like to thank the city manager for making the crucial but hard decision in October last year to cut the ties with EMC. Because I think many city staff, everyone who has followed the housing element closely felt frustrated with their delivery. And I know that cutting the tie in October when the deadline is January is a very hard decision because the city is already late and we could risk a further delay. But it was the right thing to do. And thank you for securing Placeworks and to get this move along. I think, and also I like that in this staff report, it mentioned that this time the city staff will be taking charge in presenting materials rather than the consultant taking the lead. So that we have more control of the schedule and the presentation. I thought that's a good improvement. So thank you for taking the essential steps to make this happen. We know we are late, but this is something we have to do and looking forward to working with Placeworks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Vice Mayor Mohan?
I had a brief comment. Earlier, the staff had provided the milestones from now to January 31st, 2024. And is Placeworks aware of that? I'm sure they're aware of it. But will they, did they express any hesitancy about sticking to that deadline?
So the mayor, I believe the timeline was a collaboration between city staff and Placeworks. And I'm getting a very strong head nodding from CDD staff.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager Wu. I, I want just one comment. The commitment is from staff, from city manager, from Placeworks, and also from the city council. So, thank you. So let's put that to a light vote, please.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We are only 30 minutes behind schedule, so I'd like to take a very short break, like five minutes break and come back. So thank you for being patient, all of you, and we'll be back in 8:30. Thank you.